I'll call the meeting to order after we get the motion to go into closed session.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I am certainly fine with you doing it, but as the board recalls, this is the organizational meeting.
So I've lost, we're handing the gavel.
No, I don't leave that.
You ain't chairman of the county today, so I oughta leave.
If you guys are okay then, I'm certainly okay with that, but...
No, you do it, I'll rescind what I just said, if I can.
Historically, until there's an election of the chairman.
I got you.
Administrator is performing that thing.
Take it over, bro. I'll sit back and listen.
Okay.
Kelly misled me, she said I'm ready when you...
Not to repeat what Mr. Dishner has identified. First of all, welcome to each and all that are here. The first item on your agenda today is closed session. We have three items. We have A1, which is Personnel Matters. We have A5, which is Industrial Business Prospects. And we have A7, that is legal. And it's my understanding, Mr. Lee, I won't put you on the spot, but I understand Mr. Campbell has went over those items specifically with you, so...
He did advise that we didn't need A7. I spoke to him this morning.
E, I'm sorry?
I spoke to Mr. Campbell this morning, and he said we didn't need A7 today.
I got a question about A7.
Okay.
Are we already in closed session?
No.
So let's leave A7 on there. I have a question concerning outlying matters.
Question for A7?
Yeah.
Okay. I just don't want to do anything that we don't need to do. But with that in mind, I would entertain a motion to go into closed session.
I move second.
And not to be the corrector, but if you could identify why we're going into the...
Section 2.2-3711, 8.1 Personnel Matters, A5 Industrial Business Prospects, and A7 Legal.
A motion by Mr. Call.
Second.
Second by Mr. Stevenson. In discussion. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Seven to zero. Okay, I don't call a meeting back to order. I've used my hand because I don't have a gavel for those of you in attendance that do not know. My name is Michael Carter, I'm the assistant, I'm the county administrator here in Smith County. And historically, at the organizational meeting of the Smith County Board of Supervisors, the county administrator has conducted the meeting up until the election of the chair for calendar year 2019. We will get to that shortly. Before we do that, I would ask if there's a motion that came out of closed session that any member feels the need to identify.
I'll make a motion, according to Code of Virginia, section 2.2-3711. We went in the closed session to discuss A1 Personnel, A5 Industrial Business Prospects, A7 Legal. Now, we ran out of time, and we'll have to go back and have a later point in the meeting, whenever the chairman, I guess, calls it.
Second. Do I have a motion?
I second.
Second by Mr. Stevenson. In discussion. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. It is unanimous, seven to zero. Next item on the business, on the agenda, is the invocation and the pledge of allegiance. Today, we have Kendra Hayden with us, who is going to offer the invocation. And we have Lisa Richardson, who is going to conduct the pledge. So if you please, if able, to stand. Kendra Hayden?
Dear Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for guidance, wisdom, and support. Fill us with your grace as decisions are made that affect all citizens of Smith County. Continue to remind us that all we do and that all we accomplish is for your glory. We ask you in your name.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for that. This time, I would ask, I hope the board has had the opportunity to review the agenda and the additional agenda as presented, and would ask for consideration in the adoption of such.
Move to adopt.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Call, second by Mr. Ray. In yellow discussion. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. It is unanimous. At this portion of the meeting, we begin the election of officers for calendar year 2019. The first officer of consideration is our chairman. At this point in time, I'd like to open the floor for the nominations for chair of the 2019 Board of Supervisors meeting.
Mr. Chairman, my pleasure to nominate Todd Dishner, chairman for the incoming year.
I second it.
Here we have a nomination by Mr. Call for Mr. Dishner, second by Mr. Stevenson. For the nomination, are there any other nominations for chairman for 2019 of Smith County Board of Supervisors?
I would like to nominate Charlie Atkins.
Okay. There are nominations by Ms. White to nominate Mr. Charles Atkins, chairman. Is there a second to the nomination?
I'll second.
And a second by Mr. Dishner. And are there any other nominations for chairman for 2019? Hearing none, I would ask for a motion to close nominations.
Move to close.
I second it.
We have a motion to close by Mr. Call, and a second by Mr. Stevenson. And we will take the nominations in order, that is the standard protocol. All those in favor of Mr. Dishner for serving as the chairperson for the Smith County Board of Supervisors for calendar year 2019, please indicate by raising your right hand. That is one, two, three, four, five. Opposed? And now we will take the call on Mr. Atkins. All those in support of Mr. Atkins for the chairman of the Board of Supervisors of Smith County for 2019, please raise your right hand. Two in favor, those against, and nays. One, two, three, four, five. With the results of that, with the majority of the board following Mr. Dishner's lead, I will now turn the program over to Mr. Dishner. Congratulations, you are the chairperson for the Smith County Board of Supervisors for calendar year 2019.
Thank you, guys. I hope I do you right this year. I appreciate the support. We'll open the chair, or open the floor for a nomination for vice chairman.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
My pleasure to put in nomination, Mr. Rick Levens.
My as chairman.
Motion and a second. Any more discussion? All those in favor?
You want to give our thing for board?
Yeah, I was going to do that as well. Open the floor for any other nominations for vice chair. Other nominations? Need a motion for nominations to cease?
Go ahead.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor? Motion for vice chair for 2019 is Rick Levens. All those in favor? Need a motion for the clerk?
Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to nominate Mr. Michael Carter as clerk for being sitting here.
I second it.
So I guess we...
You're the nominee?
Yeah. Floor is open for any other nominations.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to point out that by our rules of conduct, our rules of procedure, Mr. Carter, as administrator, is our clerk. Deputy clerk, we can vote on, but I don't see the need to vote Mike on this one, he's got it. I'd say for show of support.
Okay.
Was a motion and a second on the floor, so we'll need to take a vote. All those in favor for Mr. Carter as clerk for 2019? Opposed? Deputy clerk, I need the floor to open for a nomination for deputy clerk.
Chairman.
Yes.
Due to our leaving of our past deputy clerk, I'd like to nominate a intern until one can be found, Ms. Kelly Woods.
I second it.
Is there any other nominations for deputy clerk? So there's a motion and a second for deputy clerk, Ms. Kelly Woods. Any more discussion? All those in favor? Okay, I guess officers are set. Need a motion for the adoption of the meeting schedules. Currently, the meetings are held on the second Tuesday of each month at 4:00 p.m., with continued meetings as needed.
Mr. Chairman, I understand that each year, historically, of course, these are items you can change, but historically, Board of Supervisors have set the second Tuesday at 4:00 to begin their closed session meeting, with open session beginning at 5:00.
Yes.
There is one change to that, and that is in November, when the VACO conference overlaps that meeting date. This year, the VACO conference runs into the November 12th, which would be your second Tuesday of that month. So as in the past, the Board of Supervisors has always seen fit to move that meeting date to the following Wednesday, which will be the 13th. And in addition to that, although not each month, but there are months that require a joint hearing between the Board of Supervisors and the Planning Commission to conduct the business of the county. So my suggestion or recommendation would be, if you're inclined to keep the schedule as it is, is to consider, once again, second Tuesday at 4:00 for closed, 5:00 for open, with the exception of the November meeting, moving that back one day, and also identifying the need, when exists, to have those joint meetings with the Planning Commission on the fourth Thursday of each month, beginning at 7:00.
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
You moved it through, as stated by the clerk.
Second.
A motion and a second. Is there any more discussion? I actually have a question on that. With the Planning Commission calling the meetings, is that, just historically, the Planning Commission calls those meetings, should they not ask us to call the meeting? Or should the board call that meeting, or should our continued meetings?
The way that those work is there is a deadline that the Planning Commission has, if they were to receive any type of applications for changes that would require a public hearing. Typically, their deadline is around the first of each month. They receive that or they don't receive it. If they don't receive one, you have no second meeting. If they do receive one, that is the window in which they provide us the opportunity to notify you guys that there is an additional need that way. The only way that that could probably be revisited would be a complete overhaul or changing of what their due dates are on their applications, and a rethinking process. So it's not easy just to say we're going to move it to the first and fourth, because there are deadlines and processes that go through that. But if it's something that the board would like to see addressed in the future, we can certainly work towards that, but at this point in time, it all kind of falls in sequence with that at this point.
And the date wise, I'm fine with that, I just didn't know if, I don't know where I'm getting that, I guess. Maybe that we don't call our second meeting, the Planning Commission calls our second meeting, does that make sense?
And that's based off that deadline that they receive that at.
Okay.
If there's a desire by the full board to look at that, you know, it's something we can look at over time, but I'm not sure that would remedy the solution before you today.
Yep. A motion and a second on the floor, any more discussion? All those in favor? Adopt the rules and rules of procedure, it's in your handout on pages 3 through 17.
I approve. I second.
Motion and a second to approve the rules of procedures. Any more discussion? All those in favor? Adopt the holiday schedule, as approved by the governor, and as may be amended throughout the year, page 18. I guess that's the calendar of events, holidays.
I move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second, any more discussion?
You're not going to like this, Governor, he don't give them as many days off as they're used to having, if you looked at that schedule.
Is that what the highlighted dots are?
The red dots.
I know.
The way in is really good, the way out is not so good.
Yeah, it kind of tapered off here towards the end. There's a motion and a second, any more discussion?
Yeah.
All those in favor? The minutes of the previous meeting, pages 19 through 67 of your agenda.
Move to approve. I second.
Motion and a second, any more discussion? All those in favor? National status, Mr. Carter.
Chairman, I'll probably make this brief, because it's kind of late, yeah, I spend a little bit of time on it, but as you have seen in the past, there are very few very good examples of A1. Another basic comments about that, but you know, this is what we work off of. You look at the bottom of revenue, I always go Fund 1, which is the first page, year-to-date, 21,605,691. You had an original number, 24,094,680. You're 2 million 488,988 left to collect, so you're fairly close. A lot of these come in in bulk features. The next few pages are your other funds summary. I'd like to get back to page 6, which is a summary of the revenue report. It identifies what your original budget was in the far left corner, 87,634,888. Your amended budget of 87,888,151 in the second. Your current amount was 10 million 899,4709. Year-to-date, 47 million 678,809,67. You have a balance of 40,209,341,33, and your uncollected is about 45 percent. So that's pretty in line with where we are year-wise. If you flip to the next page, and these are expenditure reports, same thing, Fund 1. At the bottom of that, and I encourage you to look through each of these, but at the bottom of that, your budget and your amended number are both 24,408,637. You have a current amount of 2,462,112,29. Your year-to-date was 11,487,599,59, which leaves you in an unencumbered amount of 12,892,1037,41. So 52 percent of your remaining, we're a little above, it's always good. The remaining few pages of that are, again, your fund balances that go along with those under expenditures. To get to the last page of that, I'll do a quick comparison. Your year-to-date numbers is kind of what we look at for those. On revenue, you had a year-to-date amount of 47 million 678,809,67. You have a year-to-date expenditure amount of 38 million 995,077,21. So the difference in those two numbers is 8 million 683,732,46, which is more in revenue than you have expended in expenses at this point. The next page is just basically a reporting of all the departments. I'll kind of throw some humor in here. For those of you that haven't had to go back and get your driver's license test yet, I'm on that list, so I'm trying to get these numbers smaller so I can practice and take the vision test. So I apologize for that, but if you look down those numbers, they have a listing of all of our departments. We have column 1, which is what was spent in January of 19. Column 2 was spent in January of 18, and the difference is obviously the walk-in between them. I think if you look at the bottom, when you get to the comparison, in 19, we had a total within those departments of 835,7405. In 18, we had 927,6471. So on this expenditure report, we're 108,058.59 less than we were last year. If you flip to the next page, it's a spreadsheet, dates back all the way to 1112, and it comes all the way up to 1819. And it just shows you the deposits and expenditures over those selective budget years. If you get to the end, in 201819, you'll see the difference in deposits at 47,719,217, 36,161,154. These are total numbers. You're at 10 million 558,062. As you look across that board, we're pretty much in line with where we've been in the same period of times over the last eight years. The last page is your county expenses appropriations and additional receipts that we tried to incorporate onto one, so we're not kind of flipping so much. I didn't have a lot of time prior to the meeting, but I did have some. What I can tell you is if you look at the left-hand column in December of 17, underneath the bank balance and CD investments, in 17, we had 10,977,06 a quarter. In 18, we had 11,377,188,33. So we were 406,482,08 ahead. Really, the number that we want to get back to, if we look at our unspent appropriations, in 17, we were 773,775,02. Unspent in 18 was 629,647, so we were able to lower that number somewhat, but the balance is a true number we need to look at on this particular sheet. In 17, we had a balance of 14 million 469,632,36. And in 18, we had a balance of 14,644,821,28. We're roughly 175,188,92 above. So the calculations for the CDs have not been determined yet, nor have I had time to look over the rest, but that hopefully gives you an understanding of where we are today. It also should help when we get to the appropriations that are identified on your sheet, your additional agenda. The last report is something I always encourage you to look over, this is a treasurer's accountability report that comes straight out of the office. I'll encourage you to look over those if there are any questions that are a result of that, please let me know, I'll do my best to explain, if not, we'll get the treasurer's office involved and provide the appropriate response. The appropriations list, I'm somewhere today in front of you, if I can dig out on the sheet, but the available balance is there, should you choose to make all the appropriations identified.
Thanks, sir. Bradley Powers?
Would you like to state your name and address for the record, please?
Bradley Powers, I live at 1245 South Main Street. I wasn't able to get here last month to give you all another positive pep talk. I got slammed at work. I just wanted to come tonight to welcome you to 2019, tell you all to continue to work for the betterment of the county, to work together. Work together, that's the biggest thing to take away, is join forces and bring Smith County up. Let's not divide the county. Let's work together, work positively, and basically, not sing kumbaya, but sing kumbaya. All right, so you all are doing a wonderful job with trying to get things done. I hope you all are able to make 2019 a great year. I hope you all are able to show that you can work together and continue the good work. As some of you all know, it is an election year, so working together is always very important, but also transparency is important in letting the truth be known. So I encourage all of you all to work for the betterment of the county for 2019, and just do good work. There's your pep talk for tonight. Thanks.
Thank you very much. That's all that signed up to speak. Is there anyone else wishing to speak at citizen's time? That being said, I'll close citizen's time. Mr. Ron Proff for Appalachian Power Update, Mr. Carter.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I just wanted to provide the board an opportunity. I live over in that area, and there's a lot of work going on in that area. And, you know, it's good stuff. It's good, positive work that's going on over in Broadport area, and it has an impact on the county as a whole, as well as the surrounding areas. And I thought it'd be great if these gentlemen could come today and kind of share their vision and their thoughts, and kind of give you an update on what's going on over there. I'm excited you guys are here, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carter, for the invitation. Mr. Altizer accompanied me this afternoon. Shawn is the project manager for EEP on the project, and I'm a consultant to Shawn, basically primarily focused on the logistics issues associated with our expansion and upgrade at Broadport Station. I work for the firm of DeJoya Gray out of our Roanoke office in Plantation Road, and I have a business card, I'll leave it. Basically, as Mr. Carter indicated, it's been a little bit of busy time, we kind of stop and start, and, you know, working around the weather, and dealing with this industry as a matter of information, it's a very complex project to essentially rebuild and upgrade a EHVR, extra high voltage substation. A lot of coordination, it's an important component or important element of the national grid. You may or may not be aware of it, we have power lines going in and out of that substation, the highest voltage being 765,000 volts, which emanates out of the Kentucky Ojai River Basin from the larger generators. This line continues on towards the Roanoke Valley and down towards Martinsville area, and we also have a 500,000-volt interconnection with Tennessee Valley Authority out of this substation. So, you know, there's a lot of coordination, we have to do this work in a very systematic, well-thought-out process. We have to do this work in a very systematic, well-thought-out process. You know, we've got to keep the lights on, is about the best way I can describe it. And it's a major project. We've been in it now for about two years. We're starting to, we have accomplished some breaker replacements, some reactor replacements of some of the first stage of equipment. And we're getting ready to start into a very significant phase here early this year in bringing in a transformer. You know, all the big power transformers that were in that station were installed somewhere around the end of the '60s, 1970 vintage. And the industry that we all live in, 50 years is about the life. So we got a proverbial money's worth out of these transformers, but they now need to be replaced. So we're starting into that phase of the project now. You're going to see some activities, you know, down in the Chilhauie area. We've been working with local businesses. I know we came and met with Mr. Carter on a couple of occasions, trying to understand the feasibility of bringing this kind of equipment into this part of the country. As you well are aware, over the last several decades, the river has pulled up a lot of tracks. And the only way you can get this kind of equipment, to which you're talking in the range of 400,000, 500,000 pounds, sitting on a rail car, is it's got to be bought in by river. The transformer is the first four, we're actually going to be putting in seven total transformers in Broadport. And the first four are now in the Bristol rail yard. They were produced and built in Korea, South Korea, and they came over by ship, you know, to the New Orleans area, and they have just now arrived in the area. So as we work through our permitting process with VDOT, we'll be hauling these first four transformers from Korea over those sequential weekends. They'll be hauled one at a time, you know, from the Super Grove or the Johnson City Chemical Facility down at Seven Mile Ford, from that rail siding that we collaborated with those folks to expand and build to accommodate our transformer. They'll be hauled down Lee Highway, through the community of Chilhauie, take a right-hand turn on Route 107, all the way up to the community of Saltville, and then we'll take a right-hand turn on Route 91, headed towards Broadport. And it gets a little bit more complicated at that because the bridge over the Holston River on Route 91 will not accommodate the loading that these transformers will impart upon the highways. So we've been working very diligently with the community of Saltville and coming up with an alternative plan to get across the Holston River. And if you have an opportunity to be up in that part of the country near the old government plant site, you will see a very strange-looking structure that goes over top of the bridge that used to serve that government plant site. It's a maybe bridge. For your old-school military guys like me, back in the day, we called them, you know, Bailey Bridges. And a maybe bridge and a...
Maybe holds you...
Yeah, maybe holds your breath, yeah. Well, hopefully that's not the case, but it's a monstrous structure. The bridge over the Holston going into government plant would not accommodate the load, the deck would not accommodate the loads. And we have done a very extensive structural analysis of all the bridge crossings, the culvert crossings along this haul route, accommodating this kind of load and working very closely with VDOT. So we had to come up with a scheme once the VDOT told us that, hey, you're not going to cross the 91 bridge with that kind of load. And that's where we came to a conclusion that the piers of the bridge over the Holston that went into government plant will accommodate the load, but the deck will not. So we kind of put our heads against it, well, what can we do? And that's where we came up the idea, let's put a maybe bridge or a Bailey Bridge over top of that bridge, and we will accommodate that bridge over to the government plant site. Then we'll turn and go down the old railroad bed, right to our old Saltville station, back out on the state highway. This process of hauling these units will take two days. We'll start out on a Saturday morning, hopefully park somewhere in the area of the old Saltville Station on Saturday night, and then proceed on into Broadport on a Sunday over four sequential weekends. And it's a, you know, the project is a very significant project. We will be looking at something that's going to be ongoing until the year of 2022 to get this thing accomplished. We'll be looking at a lot of new equipment in addition to the substation. That 138 station is going to have some expansion to it. We're going to be expanding the yards to accommodate our 500 interconnect, 500 KV interconnect to TVA, and that's going to be some grading down over the backside of the substation. We're looking at a $100 million investment in this project, spread out over that timeframe. We have started site grading. We've awarded, or Sean has awarded a contract to Central Construction Company, who will be coming in and starting doing the site development work, which will basically be some expansions of the yard and the grading of the new yard down over the hill on the existing station. So it's a very challenging project. It's an exciting project. I'm glad to be a part of it. I'm an old retired AEP guy, been around forever and ever amen, and I kind of laughed when they told Sean, they kind of bring me in to help out on some of these really complicated, or I call them the ugly projects for the lack of a better way of describing them. But, you know, we've enjoyed the help we've gotten from Smith County, the community of Saltville, Chilhauie. We've met with those officials and are talking with them. We'll be working very closely with the Smith County Sheriff's Department in handling traffic control. You know, this rig that goes down the road will be a pretty spectacular sight going down the road on Saturday and Sunday. This rig is about 100 foot long. The transformer racks will be 18-foot high, so you can imagine there's a number of cables. Our folks down at Glade Springs will be involved in helping us to get under the cables and the wires. And it'll go to walking speed like a literal Christmas parade, but this first four units will come in and go down the road at 460,000 pounds. So it's a real challenge getting this kind of equipment, you know, which obviously goes without saying is very, very expensive. And we want to make sure we've got all of our eyes dotted and our teeth crossed, and that's why we're going through the due diligence with VDOT now to do some bridge inspections and things like that. So I tried to bring as much, as quickly as I can to your attention about what's going on, and I'd be more than glad between Sean and myself to answer any questions you might have. Be glad to come back whenever you feel appropriate to make further updates and let you know how things are going. But right now, things are cranking up, and we're going to be a very busy year at Broadport this year and the year 2019.
You got any questions?
I have a question. I've got a comment. I actually watched those old ones go in there.
Oh, did you? Yeah, okay.
I was working at that.
You're telling on yourself.
No, I've got a birthday this month.
There you go.
69. But anyway, I was working at the service station, right there at the bridge that you can't cross.
Right.
And they unload them over at the old station off the rail cars.
Right.
And brought them down the road and then on the line. They couldn't cross the bridge with those old ones.
Right, right, yeah. You know, in point of fact, when you look at some of the old technologies, they are bigger and heavier.
Those trucks had hauled that, and if I remember it right, had 38 wheels on it. I remember counting.
Yeah, this rig is called a Gold Hopper heavy hauler. It has 10 axles and 80 wheels. It's a self-powered, self-contained unit, and it's all hydraulically driven. Pretty neat piece of equipment. If you ever get a chance to see it, it will level itself out. It will lift itself up when you get a hump in the road and things like that. There are a couple of places where we recognize, like at the Chilhauie Elementary School, there's a culvert that goes under Lee Highway. We cannot load that culvert with this load, so we will be coming down Lee Highway, and just before we get there, we will bring a truck in and lower about a one-foot-tall jump bridge over top of that culvert, and we'll put some timber under it, you know, about two inches thick timber to make sure we do not touch the surface of that culvert, and the rig will crawl over the jump bridge.
They done that bridge in McCrady that way. They laid big old thick wood.
Mm-hmm.
Like pads, and they went on that pad across that creek bridge there.
Yeah.
McCrady Methodist Church.
Yeah, it's challenging. It's interesting, challenging work, you know, and, you know, I'll confess right up front, sometimes people get a little bit upset that we're delaying them because they're on the way to McDonald's or something like that and, you know, having to get behind our traffic. We try to be diligent about that. We will have a traffic control company, AWP, which will put out message signs and have flagmen all along the route to make sure the public knows. And we've sent out a mailer to the folks up in the Long Hall Route in the substation area to make them aware of the activity. So we try to be as transparent about as we can, but same token, I would ask you diligence on folks that may get a complaint or be upset over it, but, you know, we try to accommodate. You know, there's always going to be a, you can't characterize projects like this as no impact. It's a project of least impact is what you're trying to accomplish. And, you know, we're very receptive to hearing anybody's comments of something they may have observed that we could have done better in that regard. We're always looking to improve these processes.
Any more questions?
I just have one, and it may not pertain to the project, and you may or may not know, but I do have a curiosity. Years ago, Appalachia come to surveying people in that area over, looking for land to put the solar panels. Did it play any role with this?
I'm not, do you have any knowledge about that?
No, it's not part of this. It should be generational transition.
Yeah, there, I have read and heard, kind of like, I mean, a citizens' position more than a power company position here, but, you know, the company is looking at a mandate for alternative green energy. And I am aware through the media and things like that, that they are looking for potential solar sites, so that very well could have been the case, you know, that they would have been doing some preliminary designs to identify something for that installation, but that's as far as my knowledge goes on, yeah.
Is the upgrade increasing capacity overall?
Not really. You know, we will have, we will upgrade the bus work. The transformer capacities themselves, which really dictates capacity of the substation, are pretty much in line with what's already there. So we're not putting in more transformers, we're replacing existing transformers, so capacity will pretty much be static, yeah.
Anything else?
Where is the closest other substation of this caliber?
Okay, well, this substation receives its 765,000 from Baker Station in Kentucky, and then the next 765 line goes down to Jackson Sperry Station located at Foster Falls in With County. And, you know, at With County, the line continues on down to Roanoke to the Cloverdale Substation, then on into Joshua Falls at Lynchburg, and also splits and goes down to Axon Substation in the Martinsville Danley area. So the closest one to you folks will be Jackson Sperry, there at Foster Falls, Virginia. And there's quite a bit of upgrade over the last several years happened at that substation and a project ongoing right now. I think Sean's project manager on that one, too.
And there's upgrades at Jackson Sperry, actually, for our position.
Very good. That's all we've got. We appreciate you coming and letting us know. I know that's something really big for the communities and in the area, so...
We appreciate the opportunity, and like I say, any feedback or comments, we'll be more receptive to hear in front of you.
Well, good luck, and good luck how it transpires. I hope it all works out like it's supposed to.
All right, thank you, folks.
Thank you very much.
Chairman, I have one question.
Yes, sir.
Sir, I'm sorry, but when we're putting these new ones in, what happens to the old ones?
They're scrapped on-site. You know, we have a company that we have a contract with that will come in and we'll, you know, we'll actually tear them down, you know, we'll move them out of the yard off to a scrap area and put the proper environmental abaintments in around it, and then they'll be cut up and scrapped on-site and hauled away. It's a salvage company, I don't remember the name. And it's, you know, it's a pretty interesting field in and of itself, but, you know, we won't be looking at any kind of haul weights going out. There'll be common carriers.
Yeah, that was my question. Is it going to be as much going out as it was going in?
Well, in total, it will, but, you know, it's going to be in very small incremental pieces, yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Senator.
Go back to the approval of the appropriations. General County Accounts Payable Listing, $835,724.05. Payrolls, $695,082.01. Auto Draft Rule Development, $8,974. AEP Century Link Bills, $25,000. County Administration Fund, $5,000. For a total county appropriations plus carryover of $1580,000.
Second.
Any more discussion? All those in favor. Trough Incentive Undisclosed Business, $200,000. Any more discussion? All those in favor. Social Services, January 8th through January 31st of 2019, $350,000. February 1st through February 12th of 19, $60,000. Total Social Services of $410,000. Motion and second. Any more discussion? All those in favor. School Operating Fund, Instruction, $2,800,000. Administration Attendance and Health, $115,000. Transportation, $200,000. Facilities, $425,000. School Food Service, $300,000. Technology, $100,000. Total School Operating Fund of $3,940,000. Motion and second. Any more discussion? All those in favor. School Debt Capital Outlay, $335,000. Any more discussion? All those in favor. EDA Fund Four, $62,548.08. Any more discussion? All those in favor. Sheriff Fund Seven Forty Eight, $3,593.30. Any more discussion? All those in favor. Recovery Court Fund Seven Forty Nine, $301.09. Any more discussion? All those in favor. Courthouse Project, $7,292.33. Any more discussion? All those in favor. Fund Seven Sixty One, Sheriff's Department, $12,856. Any more discussion? All those in favor. Planning Commission Recommendation on Page 68.
Chairman, I can address that if you'd like.
That'd be fine. It's pretty self-explanatory, I guess. Go ahead.
Sorry. Planning Commission met on Thursday, December 27, 2018. File a motion to render. Commissioner Davis Finch made a motion to recommend the approval of Mr. Riley and the Clinch Valley Community Actions Request for a Special Use Permit with the condition that no building permit be issued until an adequate sewage disposal plan is approved by the Smith County Health Department. Mr. Paul Shepherd, second to motion, after consideration, the motion passed by the bottom vote. A for Sparks Finch Wagner Shepherd, few Daves and Junior D. Dean Nays None, if standards known, absence.
None of them will be approved with the same or most stipulation.
I second it, too. I mean, they can't get a building permit anyway without normal, so, I mean, this is kind of just worded it, but I second it.
Motion and second on the floor to approve the recommendation from the Planning Commission. Any more discussion? All those in favor.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I would, I, you know, right now, I don't know if everybody followed the meeting, but right now, those kids are being bused from Marion to Saltville, and, you know, while we definitely want everything to be as permitted and everything, you know, that's a need within our community to not have those kids bused that way. So in different committees and different things that we're doing as we go about our business, if there's an opportunity to, you know, help that situation and not have those kids being bused and, you know, they're preschool-aged kids, so, you know, if there's, if there's a group of, you know, if it's high school kids or middle school kids, anything that comes up, that there's a chance to aid in helping them, getting this done so that they can move on and start housing those kids in actions, I think it'd be beneficial to everybody. helping them and getting this done so that they can move on and start housing those kids in Athens, I think it'd be beneficial to everybody.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, maybe if you could, they've got your bond now. I guess a status update, Fred, you want to give us one? A status update, I know you've got VDOTs, crews everything and it's all good.
I did all the permitting on VDOT last week. Down there for them to take up and I think he was waiting for some speeding.
I have a silly question, it's probably too late to ask the question, but why are we, if we go with the sewer hookup, why are we running it east to Gary's as opposed to going west down and hook up right at the fire station? We could gravity load that way.
It's more expensive to lay gravity that distance. We're going to pump F1. So even pump F1 and mention a half pipe. So he can, he can lay a pipe that's under pressure and not on grade, on gun barrel grade and get back to Gary's. And he doesn't have to cross any major roads with VDOT specifications.
I can agree with him there, Stacking. The price to lay gravity almost doubles or triples to that of laying horsemane simply because you don't have to lay it on grade and meet all the specs in there, man. Horsemane, just dig a ditch, put it in there and cover it up and you're good to go.
How about if we have any development go on between those two, is it easy to hook on to this horsemane?
It can be tied on to, yeah. The hope is some of the grants were applied for the past seven months. We ended up with a gravity system out in that area at some point in the future and that it can actually connect to that gravity system at that time if you choose.
I mean, I'm all for it, I'm just trying to get it straight in my mind while we're going one way than the other and I just, now's the time to ask.
It's actually cost effective.
Mr. Chairman, I want to thank you all too. The county needs things like this, so if you run into a problem or something, holler at somebody here in this office.
And much I would like to thank you all for the support that they have and what people have found those things happening develops with that program.
And in correction, what Curtis said here, I saw the last couple of days they've been picking kids up at our bank. So the kids are getting on the bus up there, so there's an extra five or six miles. And that worries me to see these little B D kids getting on a bus and having to go all the way to Saltwood. Just quicker we can get them in there permanently, I would be a lot happier.
Got anything lined up? Assuming the project centers, we get the, actually we're all in the permit and stuff, you know. Things already lined up, we're trying to get it down as quickly as possible.
Okay, good. Appreciate your patience last time.
Well, I know this, as everybody here is in agreeance, it's a good thing happening. I don't know how, how the rope gets twisted sometimes, but I've heard in the community even a negative connotation of the board sewer riders trying to hold them up and force them to hook up to their sewer. And it, it, there's a lot of that around, but from, from our standpoint to yours, we're glad it's working out for you and we wish you the best.
I got that same thing and I appreciate your support that day and today as well, so we're doing what we're supposed to do. We'll make it happen and do that community work.
Absolutely, thank you. Committee Recommendations, Budget Committee met. Budget Committee met, January the second. Mr. Carter presented a budget transfer request, as shown below, for the Shares Department. The department was vacancy savings from the Compensation Board that can be utilized for vehicle expenses and maintenance. Committee recommended approving the budget transfer in the amount of two thousand, one hundred and sixty-seven dollars. That was a committee recommendation. Any discussion? All those in favor? The Budget Committee also requests to establish a budget deadline, the February the fifteenth of 2019, so we can start the 2019 and 2020 budget process. So that was a committee recommendation to establish that deadline for budget requests of February the fifteenth. Any more discussion? All those in favor? There's an additional, something laying here on our table that pertains to the next thing we talked about. Mr. Jeff Richardson, the Commissioner, came forward with a request for a tax refund. And the request was for Russell Chapel Church. The Budget Committee earlier had a question, they wanted to clarify if it was being used for church functions. And we got the history on that in the background and it is, so it, for the fellowship purposes and by the Code Section fifteen point one dash thirty-six oh six, it is exempt. And the committee made a recommendation to, to recommend that tax refund. And the amount is one thousand, nine hundred and forty-three dollars and eight cents.
Chairman, for me?
Yes.
We wanted to wait until the last day to have all the interest accrued as we can. That's why you got that today.
That was a committee recommendation as well, is there any more discussion on that one? All those in favor? And that, I mean, we discussed some other items, but there was no other actions taken by the Budget Committee. Insurance Committee, Mr. Evans.
Mr. Chairman, the Insurance Committee met to discuss two issues. The first one was the county offers the short version of four fifty-seven deferred compensation plan of the old contract with Nixon Ride had a three point five percent fixed rate. The company notified at the expiration of the, I think it's the contract, that they could sustain that three point five percent rate and gave several different options. The Insurance Committee selected option three A as the recommendation, which is the, any monies that is, that are currently in the four fifty-seven plan would be locked in at the three and a half percent rate. The decision there was employees who had chosen to invest in it or were counting on that. So any existing monies in the plan would stay at three and a half percent. And then any new employees coming, that if they choose to invest in the, in the four fifty-seven plan, it would be at a guaranteed minimum interest rate of maximum one point two percent, down to a minimum of point five percent for any new monies that would be invested into the plan. And so that was a committee recommendation.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
Did that also include like retirees that roll over?
Yeah, any one, any new monies that would go in at the new rate, any existing monies would be, which takes a three point five.
That's quite a change.
It was. And then there was lots of discussion on why, I mean, this plan, I guess, it was put into effect way before any of us were here. But with current market and things of that nature, I guess they found a way to kind of get out of some commitment. But we felt this was the best for our employees, whether active or retired, that had money into the account to guarantee the rate for the money that they've already put in.
Chairman, to sum it up, I think it was a realization from the company. I think it was an adjustment that they felt necessary, given the options.
Didn't have much choice.
Didn't have a lot of choice.
Yeah, I, I agree with you. But it's just such a draw.
Any more discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to, I'm on that committee and I apologize to the rest of the committee members. I showed up the next day, I had it marked wrong on my calendar, so I apologize for that. But I agree with the committee outcome, I think he picked the right, the fact that we can lock it in for the ones that's already paid it, I think that was excellent. I'm all in favor of what the committee did.
So it was a committee recommendation, any more discussion? All those in favor?
The second part of the, of the discussion was consideration to make a change. Basically, new employees, every year when you have your open enrollment, they have sort of an opt-in enrollment in, into their benefits. So all employees are required to attend a meeting with representative. So the recommendation was made to, to make a change in, in the, in the language of the contract that basically says that when you hire a new employee, they'll be given all the information, everything will be gone through. And they can opt in to whatever package it is they want. And then they will stay in that package until the employee requests to opt out by making contact with the HR department through an email, et cetera. So they're not required to have that annual meeting. And that was a committee recommendation.
That's great, so that means like all the optional insurances and that's like the same, right?
Everything, everything stays the same unless the employee decides they want to make a change.
So every year they don't have to meet with the representative?
Correct.
Any more discussion? That was a committee recommendation, all those in favor?
I mean, that was all.
Sir? Water and Sewer Committee, Mr. Call.
Yes, sir, I called a meeting order at four forty-three, the Water and Sewer. Mr. Simpson put out bids for upgrades at Pathway Park Well. He sent out five bids, there was only one response from Rover Drilling located in Christiansburg. Their total bid for the well work was seventy-four thousand, one hundred and eighty-five dollars. We have available seventy-seven thousand, eight hundred and ninety-seven oh nine. We continued the discussion on the part seven B and the bid was to extend the well another hundred and twenty feet. And after discussion, it was thought that we'd better not do that because you can't damage a well, a good function of a well if you go any deeper. So Mr. Stevenson made a motion to approve Rover Drilling's bid with the exclusion of part seven B, which was ten thousand, four hundred and forty dollars from the original bid, which left us with a award amount of sixty-three thousand, seven hundred and forty-five dollars, fully funded by C cap and Mount Rogers Planning District Commission. Mr. Ray seconded the motion and all agreed to committee recommendation.
Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Next, Mr. Simpson phoned the committee, two separate requests for proposals were advertised last month and were due by the twenty-eighth. One was for term engineering services and the other was for multiple larger projects. He distributed the RFP response packets to the committee. There were total of eight and ten responses respectively. Staff and committee will review the proposals individually, rank them on the score sheet and meet again in the coming weeks to determine final ranking order for interviews and/or awards. The third item, Mr. Simpson, was concerning a snowstorm over the weekend of December the eighth through the tenth, which severely impacted Smith County. Water and Sewer bills were due on the tenth and the county offices were all open for business. A few complaints were received from the citizens regarding the county not changing the due date date to the storm, due to the storm. In response, a report was compiled that indicated the county collected a total of eighty-eight dollars and four cents of penalty on Tuesday for unpaid bills. The committee discussed many options available to pay bills remotely as well as the opportunity for customers to pay their bills well ahead of the due date. The committee determined it would take no action to modify the due date or refund any penalty collected on that day. Nothing else, sir. Meeting was adjourned at five ten.
Got a question, Ms. Simpson, is that? I mean, there was an eighty-eight dollar, four cent penalty amount. Is that, what's a normal month minus a snowstorm, is there, is that in line?
There's well over a thousand dollars, almost fifteen hundred dollars a penalty every month.
I could get, be a little bit misleading, says it indicated the county collected a total of eighty-eight oh four. How much was assessed on that? Because they were delinquent on the eleventh, I guess the question is how much was that? How much more did we charge and we normally have charged?
That eighty-eight dollars, four cents, what we calculated was everybody that came in on the eleventh and paid, we collected eighty-eight dollars of people that paid penalties. So had we extended the due date to the eleventh to close the business instead of the tenth to close the business, we wouldn't have collected that eighty-eight dollars of penalty. Because the penalty would have been put on the account that day, it would have been put on the next day.
But what I'm getting at there is you added, I guess, maybe look at it a different way. Normally, let's say you, you have, we had the figures in our packet there somewhere, delinquent bills. Normally we have two hundred delinquent and most of those get, all but fifty of those get paid before the cutoff. Was that, how significantly was that number up?
It was, and it was pretty similar to what else.
Yeah.
That was all, that's all I have, sir. Okay. Well, we've, we've got a, I guess we're down to supervisor comment time and we've got to go back into closed session to finish what we were doing in closed session. So if it's all right, we take a ten minute break before we go into closed session?
I'm not sure, I can't look yet through the audience.
Uh huh.
If there's anybody else here that has anything to say. I noticed Mr. Palmer, I can see him in the back, I can't see anybody.
No reporting today, just visiting? Okay. Yeah, have the opportunity in Citizens Town too, if anybody wanted to, so. Well, it's going to take a ten minute break and then we'll come back and finish up our closed session and some.
Oh, yeah, I've got a planning commission.
All right, we're back in session. I know it's not on our agenda, but Mr. Simpson would like to address this and I think, now, I don't think it necessarily has to be put on our agenda for him to address this, so. If you would, you got the floor, buddy.
Okay, well, I don't need the floor very long.
Background check.
I guess first off, I mean, all of you all know and the public, I guess knows by now, I've been appointed the county administrator in Halifax County. And start there officially February first. And we're working on compiling all files and documents and trying to have a transition plan in place. And my last day physically here at the county will be the twenty-fifth of the month, so it'll be a couple of weeks from, it's Friday. So we've tried, Halifax was real, real kind to give me additional time to work myself out of Smith County. They understood the involvement that I had in, in a lot of different projects and a lot of different facets of the county. They actually really wanted me to start second week of December and I told them that I just couldn't give two weeks' notice and pick up and leave, I didn't think that was appropriate, so. Especially when my contract up there, I have to give them two months' notice if I decide to leave up there, so. I think it was, it was fair to give that same respect back to Smith County, so that's why we've, Michael and I have talked for things like, it's been two months now already, but trying to, trying to find a good, a good point in time. So I appreciate him and the board for letting me have a long transition instead of once I made a decision, they'll just send me out the door and not leaving you. and not leaving you prepared for anything I was involved in. So, but it's kind of actually interesting sitting out here tonight. The, when I started here at the county, I sat right there in that chair and gave you water sewer updates. And I ended today sitting here giving you water sewer updates. It was actually pretty fitting. The, I think, over the past, been here for 15 years, March 1st, so I'll be leaving a month shy of 15 years here in Smith County. Which seems like it's, sometimes it seems like it's been three years and sometimes it seems like it's been 33 years. But I feel that when I came here to Smith County, I think, Mr. Dishner, you're the only one on the board at that time that's still here now. The staff and a lot of people in the community welcomed, welcomed us here and it felt like home for a long time. So it's made it difficult to make a decision to move on to an opportunity. But I appreciate everything that, all the former board members and past board members and current board members and Mr. Carter and Mr. Whitmore when he was the administrator that actually hired me. Appreciate all the confidence that you've had and allowing me to sort of some free rein, to come up with some ideas and try to further the county. I think overall, we, we served a lot of people with water sewer. Probably if you, I haven't totaled it all up, but I'd say over 1,000 people either got water or new water or new sewer service with a lot of the projects that we implemented and put into place. We not hiring a construction manager for the courthouse and by that being handled by the administrative office here, probably saved the county $100,000. And overall, the courthouse project had better control and ended up being $4 million under budget, under what you borrowed. So I think collectively, that's a huge benefit for the county and something that the taxpayers can and should appreciate. The efforts that went into trying to save money on, I know it's still a large project. There was a lot of money saved. The, yes, that's, that's pretty much it. I just, I want to appreciate all the opportunities that I've been given to advance myself, to learn administration rather than just water sewer and public works. I think that, I was Michael's assistant for, actually February 1, the day I leave will be exactly eight years that I was the, named the assistant. So I think those eight years prepared me to move on to a very similar county, similar size, similar population. Geographically, it's almost twice the size. It's 830 square miles versus the 450 or so square miles here. I think it prepared me to make the next step as an administrator and not feel overwhelmed that I'm going to a county that has 900 employees and a $400 million budget and it's just probably overstepping and outkicking my coverage, I guess, in a football term. Again, I appreciate all the confidence that you've had with everything that I've tried to work on. And ultimately, I hope that when I leave, I've left Smith County a better place than when I came. Go the hell ahead.
Buddy?
Very much, man. Wish you the best and don't be a stranger.
I'll be back on the weekends and those schools out.
You know, we might come and visit you at one of your board meetings.
I'll be back.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
He's an awful good man. I mean, he's very, very versatile. He ran in on the system. He's probably one of the better engineers I've worked with and I've worked with quite a few. I had to use terms and redneck stuff. And, you know, I use a horse pretty regularly to make a living off of. And many times I've sold a good horse thinking he would be easy to replace. And that's not the case. And I think we'll find that here. So appreciate it.
Might get speed and ticket there. We could have a sound.
Yeah.
Scott, I do appreciate you, the service that you've given to Smith County and we both kind of started around the same kind of time, I guess. But I've noticed, being on budget for a long time, you grew into knowing that budget. I know the drill sergeant over there teach it, you know, but I mean, you were just, it was a, you were a good team player, I felt like. And really made up part of the team here. And that's, that's a position we're going to try to fill. But I always say it's hard to fill another man's shoes and I get that. You have your qualities that you'll take out and leave here with. So I do appreciate everything you've done, man. I do think you've helped the county progress forward in projects and different things. And just kudos to you. Good luck to you.
I appreciate it.
I know we'll be seeing each other around. This is just kind of an official bon voyage or however you say that, so...
I think, well, I think the one thing that I've emphasized to a lot of people is that I'm not leaving unhappy. I'm not leaving because I dislike anything. It's, it's a tremendous opportunity and it's one that I don't want to regret for me and my family that pass up.
Well, you got to grow.
Know when the next one comes. And it's a good time with the kids' ages and all sorts of stuff to take a, take an opportunity.
No regrets on our end. Just good luck and Godspeed.
I want to talk to you on the phone a couple of years. You pick up at South Hill Axes.
Yeah, you won't understand me. All righty. Well, thank you all.
Scott. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
I would just like to say congratulations. I haven't worked with you that long on the board, but as fellow employees in the county. And I wish you well and your family well. And we certainly will miss you and your family. Been wonderful having you all here.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Shame on me. I say one day. Not to be left out. And mine won't be as nice. I'm not staying.
Well, I wondered if we had a roast. We could start on one end and go all the way through. That'd make it a little more interesting.
What I would say is for those, those many years, you know, I, I more than anyone here have watched Scott grow. And I'll tell you, you know, I've watched him grow in several ways, including east-west and some others. And that's all been fun dining and dandy. But he has been a real, a real trooper. And, you know, there were, there were times, there is no, there's no guarantee that your time spent here is all going to be roses. There have been times that, there have been, and we've had to have some, some roundhouse meetings and we've had to have some, some understandings and adjustments. And I will tell you, I have never had another employee as willing to accept those type of discussions that identified problem areas or constructive criticism. Never had one like. And he took those, he bounced back. And I told him, you know, I liked it. I was on vacation and I'm going to tell this quick story because it's kind of funny, I guess. But I was on vacation back in November, minding my own business, doing my own thing. And I get this text message from Scott and it basically says, "I'm in a bit of a dilemma and I, I need to talk to you and I'd be glad to come to Rich Valley to do it." And this is, I don't know, it's 6:30 at night. I'm thinking, man, there's something, eh? So I said, "It's all right. I, I need to come to Marion and get a few things. I'll let you know when I'm there." So I did. It was raining. It was nasty. So we made out here in the parking lot and we come on in the office. And I'm expecting something just teetotal and blow to all pieces or whatever. And he sits down and Scott's always been one that's good about eye contact. You know, he don't start a conversation over here. He looks at you when he talks to you. So he gets in and he sits down in my chair and his eyes are everywhere but me. And I'm thinking, yeah, well, that's something up. And he says, "I've got a dilemma and here it is." And he basically identified to me that he had inquired about that administrator's position and described the process that it was. And more or less said, "And I think it's going to be something I'm interested in." And I'm not going to try to make him feel bad, sad or ugly. But I'll tell you that night, I felt like there were a lot of emotions in, in he and I's discussion because of his, his passion and his, you know, love of this county and what he was leading. And a lot of times you have employees that make decisions and they base them on disgruntledness or whatever. There was none of that. You know, the guy saying the praises of you guys and the guy saying the praises of our tight-knit family, the guy did all of that. But at the end of the day, it's what's best for him and the opportunities in his career that he wants to gain. And I told him, I said, you know, I'm a, I'm a Jeff Lannigan kind of guy. There's a part of me that feels selfish and says, "Man, I'm sorry to see you go, but the guy that outweighs that is the one that's, that's tried to help, you know, and prepare you for these events." And professionally, all I can do is support you in your role. And, and I'll do that. And I told him that my door and line is always open. And if there's anything that I can do to help him, that I would. Because what he identifies as this county and myself and the staff being to him, he has every bit of that to me. And Scott, we've talked. We'll talk again. We're going to have a little go-away eating for him because you know, he, he likes to eat and we like to feed him. So we're going to have a go-away eating for him on the 25th. And it's going to be a potluck and it's going to be a bring your own meat or a bring your own design. And we're going to have that, but...
I think Paul's just, if you could provide some beverage.
Beverage?
Beverage?
I could, but I ain't hauling everybody home.
But I just want to point that out. He, he has been it for me. And he has been a great support. And I hope that we've given him everything that he needs to. Maybe not, maybe not hit the ground running because it's a different atmosphere, but at least not hit the ground falling. And I'm very excited for him.
Well, he's been well said tonight. And I'll tell you one thing for sure. I thought I'd never find until I met that man right there, he can outeat me. That's about it. We'd go to dinners and we'd, many of both would pig out, but he could beat me every time. But that's why he's grown since he's been here.
Probably true.
All right. I'll let you all finish your meeting and we'll be back in the morning.
Thank you, Scott.
Thank you all.
Mr. Powers, are you wanting to stay for supervisor comment time? If you're all right, you can do that before we go into closed session.
Yeah, I figured I'd stay this one. I might as well stay the rest.
Um, so, okay, do some comment time. I don't know how to, that's usually just the end thing we do. We've got to go into closed session and then you've got to leave again, come back and all that, so I'm just trying to be accommodating.
If the board agrees to change that on your agenda to allow for that to occur, why not?
Need a motion. I make a motion to...
Need a motion to comment before you go into closed session? All right. Any more discussion? All those in favor? All right. We're seeing to go on last month.
It doesn't matter. Whichever way you want to.
It don't matter. Don't remember where to start.
Hey, you got to just be careful going on. That's good and nice.
That's great.
Good. Congratulations.
Thank you.
You have a real sneaker again this year?
Come my best.
That's great.
I'm good. Shit, I'm good. Liam?
Congratulations on being the chairman and I appreciate both of you that supported me for vice chair. And you've been here twice now and said some good things. Much appreciated. But you know, the negative side of me, I'm always up for the foot, you know, the next foot to fall. But I appreciate you coming and it's amazing that you would stay till the end. A lot of people do things like that.
I just thought it was rude to leave pre-charge.
Not the ones that have good things to say anyway.
Well, I'd like to congratulate you.
Thank you.
And you're awesome. And to know that you have full support of the board and appreciate all the hard work you are doing behind the boards. Let go to a new year and good things.
Thank you. Ditto some of that with thanking you guys for the confidence to serve as chairman again. I hope I do as well as I can. I know I, there's times I fall short just as much as anybody else does on certain days. So I try my best and I try to be as fair as I possibly can. So thank you for your vote of confidence. And with that, I'll need a motion to go into closed session.
Chairman, I make a motion based on the Code of Virginia Section 2.2-3711. We go into closed session to finish.
Travis.
No, I've done it here.
Travis said he needed to add A7 as well. Yes.
Yeah, I got an update, Mr. Campbell.
Okay, so to A1 personnel and A7, we...
Want to go with legal first or get it out of the way?
Need a second to go.
I got a second.
Any more discussion?
What did you name?
All those in favor? Mr. Travis, do you would?
Yes, Mr. Campbell, I've got an update.
Um, we're in an open session this...
I've got nothing to add.
Let me make a motion that we, coming out of closed session, based on Code of Virginia, Section 2.2-3711, we discuss A1 personnel.
A7.
A7.
A7. We have a legal update. I'm sorry.
There's a motion in second or a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
No, I have a second.
All right. Any more discussion? All those in favor? All right, we're out of closed session.
No, I think Phil had a question.
Mr. Carter, is this board's desire to terminate the security agreement we have, what's the proper steps in your opinion?
30 days, yes.
That we could make that move tonight? All right, Mr. Chairman?
The only thing that I would ask is if that is the decision of the board for you to allow me some type of understanding as to how I describe that to the company, just as it occurs?
You want it in my words?
I can edit those.
How about with, in order to put a bigger emphasis on school resource officers?
All right. That, I know it's a waste of freaking money.
So better utilization of funds, I'll make it sound like it should sound.
It's not a waste of money. I just feel like with it, the things that, the situation under certain circumstances, we try to waste money. I don't think right now we're giving the citizen the best bang for their buck. So...
Keep in mind that'll be, that'll be 30 days from...
We, we also, I think it was also mentioned re-establishing the entrance to the building.
As a quick reminder, those are the steps. There was this huge push to make this thing as secure as it could be, to limit the doors because it's, I know some of us remember, everybody had a key to every door. That was part of that push. So if there is a desire to remove those alarms and all that, certainly we can do it.
I don't know that I'd remove all that. That's been a lot of money spent preparing for that.
Would y'all consider possibly giving that to a proper committee to try to come up with a good transition?
Building and grounds?
Building and grounds, whoever.
Get all the board members a buzzer to come in that.
Can you just make me come back to another meeting?
Everybody is coming.
And then go to it all. Let's hash it out. It's 10 after 8. Have we, we talking about...
Let's just, let's just leave the entrance. Let's just, we'll re-address the entrance.
All right, well, let's leave, we'll re-address the entrance. All right, well, let's leave, we'll re-address the entrance later if you're all right with that, but I'd like to make a motion on that end.
Because I've heard, I've had other people say it's like a maze to get in here.
May I say one thing? If we do that, we're gonna have to spend some money because the door, hardware's, all these.
We have the cameras and the rocks and.
There's no cameras, we never win.
Okay.
But the, but the door mechanisms themselves are gone, so.
How much money does that get cost?
I don't know. It, it's gonna cost because these aren't your standard.
And I love.
Not a comedic idea.
Right, what, what about if we make a motion to discontinue our contract with them with proper notice and send the discussion of re-changing the interest in building the grounds to look into?
Yeah.
So I make that motion at this time.
I'll say it. Motion on the second, any more discussion? All those in favor?
Now, Mr. Chairman, while I'm talking and on the roll, we have taken too much. We've looked at this list and I make a motion that we approve the increasing salaries for the people you have on this list.
It's for, uh.
The list is presented, you understand that, Mr. Carter?
Based on his recommendation.
Based on your recommendations.
If that list has not been altered.
It hasn't.
My accent, so that I do not.
It has not been altered.
Then I have a copy of that and I will use that and we'll make that an assertion in the minutes.
And that list includes you, so I make that motion at this time?
Second.
But it is with your recommendation and validated by your recommendation.
I understand that, that essentially is the way of saying that there's any flack I get.
Well, not really, I mean, the, you know.
That's what, that's what I.
If there's any queue and it's gonna be. All right, I got a motion on the floor, is there a second?
Second.
All right, any more discussion? All those in favor?
Thank you.
We've had supervisor comment time, guys. I feel like we're starting out the new year with a roll.
Dammers on, take.
I'm, I'm glad for the open discussion.
I'm sorry to interrupt you, Mr. Chairman, but Field had asked me, I was talking about an SRO, we've had a several conversations about it, but again, it's one of the things that, I mean, I would like to see us explore with these other changes, is the possibility, especially with the chair's office, to revisit SROs and, and, I mean, we haven't gotten an update. Um, there was an advertisement for part-time people, so maybe sometime in the near future, we can then see what's going on. There possibly could be some additional funds in care of such a situation.
Well, I was a little concerned with not having representation from there tonight as well, sitting over here in the corner. Mr. Carter sent a text to address that earlier, so.
Would you like the response I got?
I would.
That's because I, that's very.
I sent, at six-twenty-four, I sent a, a text message to Sherwood. I said FYI, there's no deputy at our board supervisors meeting tonight. His reply was, "Sorry, not sure why," I checked before I left to make sure some woman was assigned. "Can you let me know the details tomorrow so that we can follow up with it?" He says, "I will." Just spoke with Captain, this was at six-thirty-seven, which was thirteen minutes after I sent it. Just spoke with Captain Blavens, he told me the deputy was seven o'clock, sorry again.
All right, we just adopted our rules and meeting dates and times, so.
They've never changed.
So it's the same, so if you would on our behalf.
Well, it still didn't show up at seven.
Yeah.
Yeah, a good call, yeah.
It's eight.
Good call, Curtis.
I'll be glad to, to pass that on.
I'm not happy about it and I don't think anybody else is. We, I don't think that's too much and the crowd right now is pretty calm, but I think that we should have representation there. I'd hate for Roscoe to have to reach in his boot.
May I ask for clarification on one thing?
Yes.
The door alarm, what are we doing, are we waiting?
Yeah, that's, that's foot off. Buildings and grounds are a lot of rest.
I just want to make sure before I close my.
So we did our comment time, but I, I would like to say again at the very end, just thank you guys for your support. I am so pleased with the way tonight's meeting went with candor and rebuttal and everybody kept cool and everybody agreed and talked and I love it, I hope that's a good sign for my team coming. And I'm, I'm anxious for the year ahead, thank you guys and do we have a Thursday meeting?
You do not.